It is six thirty. And I am going to call the order, our special meeting, and we will start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, visible in the justice world. Are there any questions on our kids and Jibka?
Didn't have a question, but I did want to point out thanks to our voters for the tech levy. Looks like that helped update our wireless network, so.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can carry? Alright, on to our budget update for our presentation.
Yeah, so we have Shalise here. If you have any questions, you should have received really two documents. The first one is contains some specific information about the general fund capital of the five different funds. It has on the second page enrollment. And then the second document that's there is really the one that has different graphs comparing last year to this year. So not sure if you you have any specific questions, any comments regarding the information. One of the reasons we do this is to just track our progress compared to last year at this time regarding our fund balance specifically, where I think our biggest concerns have been. I will share with you at this time that it was last year around, I think, the eighth of February that we received the access to OSPI's website and the health indicators. So that that information that we then shared, it is not available yet. So it was my understanding that it was going to be published last week. It was not published. Again, this is the the financial health indicators.
OSPI.
Yes, and so when we're waiting, I have a feeling that they have some other things right now that they're they're working through.
Yeah.
And so I'm hopeful that we're going to see that. You know, if we don't see it this week, then maybe we'll see it first part of March. Any questions regarding the budget update?
No, it just it does look like we're doing much better than we had projected, which is great. Yeah.
And just due to the additional headcount, we didn't lose as many, or is there anything? I guess my question is, is there anything in addition to the headcount that we had planned for that's contributing to the increased revenue?
I would say it was it looks like it's increased because of the reductions that happened last year.
So anything else we can think of as far as spending or additional revenue that we've received from grants? I don't know that there's anything specifically that we can we can say because of this, I think more.
Are we going to see that split in April when the funding runs out?
If the funding runs out, then yes, but this projection that I have only it has an assumption in there that we're not going to receive all of the funding, so that's not actually is a fund debt. So hopefully the estimate is right, and if it does stop, it won't be a debt, but we're not planning to risk it.
This is great again. Thank you. It's so easy to read and so easy to understand.
Right, so when you look at our yeah, so our fund balance for January, I think was right around six percent. Right, and so it was it was the next month last year that we were at our biggest concern. So more than likely, it'll probably dip below below six percent. Right, it's not going to down to half a percent or one percent.
Nice job. Nice work. I know it's a combination of tips and grants and a lot of hard work.
Jim, did you have any question?
Nope, I just reiterate whatever else said. It's looking good, better than I expected, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, before we get to the next one, I want to make sure I have not joined Zoom. So I want to join Zoom, and when I do this, it's usually, yeah, some things happen.
It's a little noisy.
It gets a little noisy, so. Bear with me. Okay, that's not at all.
Of course, this time it won't.
I'm getting requests to sign yet. Leslie, how long have we seen?
And then it wants you to update to all the things.
Yes, no, maybe maybe what I'll do is check and see if it's in the. This is the first that it looks like that, so. All I need to do is have a presentation ready.
You broke it.
Challenging, you know, it was this, I was on Zoom yesterday, so very unfortunate. So we'll go ahead and move forward.
Alright.
So next item.
We are going to go over our annual board policy for series one thousand review. Did everybody have a chance to look at that?
Aaron.
Yeah, so this is something that we did last year and maybe even in the last couple of years, is looking at this this series. And so so Jane and and I, I don't know, I don't care if you did this, you probably did this last year in in January. Jane, you certainly hadn't had access to to it then. So just to wonder if you have any questions about the thousand series. So I think there's thirty five policies within this series. And you know, it defines the roles, responsibilities, operations for the board of directors. It really looks at the the relationship between the the board and the superintendent, electoral process, your duties, ethical standards. So a lot happening in this series specific to how decisions are made and really how the the superintendent supports the board, the board supports the superintendent. So I don't know if you have any specific questions about this series. I will say that having discussions with with Cory and with Shalise regarding updating our board policies and procedures and, you know, possibly looking at, we started looking at the six thousand series and which which policies have not been revised. We're going to be presenting those in the near future, future board meetings. So as far as the thousand series, thoughts, wonders?
That's explanatory, that makes common sense to me.
Yeah, it's like there, I mean, there's some changes or anything to it, and it's all stuff we've learned through all of our fun meeting or things that we've done, though.
One thing I did talk Karen about is that we have a policy procedure of what to do should the school board decide to have zones. But we've already decided that.
Yeah.
And so I think something to look at as we review our board policies is to identify the ones that even though the state says are the policies, do we really need them? So that's just an editorial recognition.
Right, and when you think about the process that we follow, and this is relevant because we have some revisions that you were presented last board meeting. And there's decisions being made at the federal level that we're waiting to see what the impact is going to be with us. But there's a line of communication that's established, like we rely heavily on WASDA to give us leads regarding these policy revisions. And we wait for OSPI and WASDA works closely with OSPI, WASDA works closely with a variety of council. So we are waiting to see the policies that we are updating now, where we determined that those were important for us and had nothing to do with the current decisions that are being made. But again, we are waiting to see what happens right now. We are relying on state statute, relying on OSPI's guidance, and we're going to continue to do that. And the first thing, we must follow state policy, we must follow state statute.
We talked to our attorneys as well, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. And our, yeah. Stevens Clay does work with WASDA, and WASDA works with other attorneys, but the others, we appreciate that relationship in in supporting our decisions that we're making. There certainly are local decisions. We, I think, in as long as I've been in this currently in this position and working at district office, we rely heavily on WASDA's counsel.
Well, now you made me pick the question.
Sure.
In the case that state and federal policy don't align, which are we, if I read this right, right now, we follow state, is that the case?
Yes.
And then it's the state that can go.
Yes. Yep, and so we received communication from state superintendent on a regular basis and just giving us updates on what process they are following. So it was recently last week, our state superintendent sent out a communication to all of us, just identifying, you know, given the recent communications that from the federal level, just what our guidance is. Yeah, thanks for the question. Alright, I don't know if Jim has any questions regarding this series?
Nope.
Alright.
Alright, next up, we have our federal title grant overview presentation.
Yes, yeah, I need, yeah, thanks. Reese is going to do it from that location.
Good evening, everyone.
Before you start, yeah, so so this was a presentation, it was, there was, I think, ask for probably in October regarding, just I think specifically around Title One. And so Tracy and I discussed, you know, what what could we share regarding, and I think it was also connected with our school permit plans.
Yes.
And how are we supporting our students, in some cases, our families? So Tracy put together this presentation. We want to have it last board meeting, two or three weeks ago. Yeah, so so she again is going to present to you, and this is one of the things that Tracy does, among many other things, is support our these grants that she's going to be talking about. And so she works closely with our building administrators, closely with the staff that are connected to these these funds. And I think she might talk some specific examples, and you may have some questions during this presentation, so feel free to ask. Thanks, Tracy.
Thanks. So basically, we looked at, we look at a number of title grants. And every year, we apply for those grants, and they they come with a dollar amount, not before we apply, it's after we get told how much money will be included in that. But we also rely heavily on what we got in years past. And sometimes there's some changes to that, some compliance things that we have to do or not do. So some of that could be impactful. But you'll see as you go through the document or the the different pages, by far, the majority of all of our title funds are spent on people. And not really on on materials and things like that so much. But there are there are certain pockets that we that we can use for that. But predominantly, they cover staffing those those programs. So if you look at Title One A, and that's a that's a this is a federal grant, so improving the academic achievement of kids, of low-income students. That is where we we fund our behavior, support staff, our health assistive people that we have in the in the health rooms. We had a we had a handful of combination classes this year that we know that that's the three, four, one, two, K one. Some of those went away, and most cases, we still have a couple. So we we funded the the paraprofessional that that comes with as in accordance with our collective bargaining agreement. We also spend it on partially some of my salaries, some of Betty's salary to administer the grants and that. And then also partial funds for that, also with some specialists, specifically music is happens to be out of Title One A. So we got this year a total of five hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred seventy. And as you'll go, as we'll go through a couple of these, you'll see that we we have the ability to move some of these funds at times. When we see the need and this area is more, we can, we can, we can shift it in some cases. We, of course, get that approved with our contact people with OSPI.
Tracy, do these funds carry over one year to the next?
No, no. Now, there there could be some cases where specific situations that may allow you to do that, but overall, no.
So maximizing grants is a high priority for us when they don't.
And you have you ask OSPI for approval if you need to.
Yes, okay.
And so for these, is it the type of grant, like, you know, you have somewhere you run your plan and you get it, and then you have the flex ones, which I'm guessing these are, where you actually have to show the expense and the reimbursement, and then they reimburse?
Then I work closely with Shalise, obviously, to to orchestrate that, but yes, it's on an ongoing. This is really the work that my assistant Betty Gable and I do July, August, September, as the school year starts. So yes.
So are you are you applying for the funds in the next year? Like, can you plan ahead for how much you're going to receive and then?
We we get some estimates. And that's what we, that's what, that's how we plan. We get those estimates, and they're generally pretty, pretty close. Shalise gets information on her end. We saw that we're going to have a change in some of our lower socioeconomic percentage at one or two of the schools, and so that may, it's going to change whether we get.
Whether we qualify or not.
We may, we qualify.
Funds or current funds we're getting that we may not qualify for next year. So if we have staffing or a program that's connected to these funds, we're getting specifically for a school, but next year, there's going to be a change, and we need to decide if that's a program we can continue. If it is something we're going to continue and get it out, we're.
Currently, do we have any concern about these funds not coming through for the year at least?
We haven't been given any guidance yet, not any of that. I mean, we're obviously watching every day. But no, we haven't.
And then each year, can you speak us up really quickly, you know, Tracy or Shalise, on where you're auditing, the auditors looking at at these funds?
Yeah, so every year, we have an audit, and it consists of three parts, and one is called a single federal audit. So they take all of our federal funds and they have to audit a certain percentage based on our risk for the year. So like, if we have low financials, they might audit a bigger portion. This year, they chose to do food service, which is federal programming. They audited that. Some years, they choose to do Title One. So when they pick a grant, they look at everything. They look at your application you sent to OSPI, all of your, they're called grant claims that you do every month, where you say, we spent this much, you submit it by the fifteenth, and then you get reimbursed for what you spent. And they look at all of those claims, make sure they actually match the expenditures in your system, and you didn't overclaim that you spent money. And then they will actually pull, you know, payroll and want to see time sheets and time and effort that that person you coded actually does work in that program. Yeah, so pretty in-depth.
I think I did roughly how many people this money supports for us. I mean, I know it's not necessarily supporting all their salary, but like.
Right, so in in Title One, we have three, because we have we have three Title One schools. So those, there's three behavior support and health room people there. Combination class, that's a little bit fluid, because we had more in the beginning, we have less now. So that amount changed. Administrative support stayed certain percentage, very small, I think it's maybe ten percent, twelve percent, something like that. And then there's a, I think, the percentage for specialist was like fourteen percent, thirteen percent, something like that of now. These funds can only be used with our Title One schools. Yeah. So I think I kind of explained to you before, when I was talking about the OSSI monies that our three schools got, just so happens that those are our title schools, that as long as we provide PDE and things for all three, we can include CAPE in that, in that, in what were those resources that we're we're providing, we can include them as long as the others are included.
This this may be something Jane asked, I'm not sure, but just from my own knowledge, these are funds that we've received from federal government and we have to spend for the year. Or these are, we have to request reimbursement each month and potentially subject to changes at the Department of Education level.
I actually don't know the answer to that, Jim. I can defer to Shalise. We get that money.
So they're they are funds that we get as we spend, so it's a reimbursement basis. So every month by the fifteenth, we submit in an OSPI system called EGMS what we spent, and then we get reimbursed at the end of the month for that reimbursement. But they are funds that are allocated to us, so around April or May, the year before, we get preliminary. And then once the grant is approved, we get a final. And so the funds are set aside for the district, but we don't get them upfront. We only get them as we use them. So if we don't spend, they go back into OSPI's bucket.
Okay, so but does the, are the federal monies deposited in in OSPI and not subject to clawback sometime later this year, or can we count on them for for sure, or is it kind of up in the air?
What they're currently saying in a WASBO presentation I went to the other week is that they don't feel for this year, we should be worried about our federal funding, because it was already awarded to us. The total was already set aside and awarded to the district. It's that they can't speak to future years, because that money hasn't been awarded yet.
Thank you.
The second slide is Title Two, which is professional development that can be used for teachers, principals, any other school leaders. We took that amount, for some of you, you can recall last year that we used that amount, the seventy-two thousand, and that's what we paid for our solution tree contract that we ended. Last year was our third year of that cycle. So we took that money, so that is now part of that five hundred ninety-three thousand on the first slide. There were things that we really needed in that Title One A. And you don't always have the ability to move the money from whatever title you want. It generally just goes back to Title One A. That's the bigger pot, shall we say. So we didn't have any any monies that were spent this year for Title Two in in the years past, I think. Well, I guess, Aaron, we are using some of that money this year, but we're using it out of Title One. We're bringing some of our litigation team to do some some training with principals on evaluation and things like that, so centered on very specific need. Title Three is specifically for multilingual learners. You know, we don't get a whole lot for that, so it does, it does pay for partial, our partial Spanish-speaking liaison that part of their job also is part of the family resource coordinator position where that person is able to kind of provide support for those families, so.
Any questions about Title Two or Three?
Different salaries and super pay for students.
We did the same thing with Title Four, because when you look at student enrichment, MTSS, and safety, that's where we really put our money in our behavioral support with our health assistance that, you know, that we have at 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 those elementary schools. So there's a, we rolled that back into Title One as well, so we could utilize it there.
So each elementary has a student support health assistant position. That's one position. It's, it really has two titles, because we merged two different job descriptions for this. So it's an individual who works with students for specific reasons, it can be around behavior, he'll also be around supporting students who they can help.
And with those funds, obviously being under Title One, that only accommodates for the schools that are Title One schools.
Okay.
So yes, even though we have an additional school that we fund with other funding. Then we have the TBIP grant, which is the Transitional Bilingual Instruction Program. That pays predominantly our multilingual support. And we added an additional classified staff member this year, but we also changed our model a bit, and we changed, bless you, we changed that certified teacher from a one point O, that was one of the cuts, to a point six. So we we made that change. Also, part of the Spanish-speaking liaison position, as well as some support administratively for for that. Any questions on TBIP or Title Four? Then the last one, I just included, this, these are not federal funds, our lab funds, our state funds. But I know that you guys hear a lot about lab, so I wanted to be able to clarify, you know, what what does that mean? And 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 who it pays for with that. It's a significant chunk of money. And we we do a lot with it. So our certified staff, we've gone, we've gone down, we've decreased in the in the past four years. We've also increased a little bit on the classified side, because we're using a different model to deliver those services. We're also, we changed this year with, we've traditionally always given each school a set the same amount as far as staffing support for lab, and this year, we changed that. And because there is such a difference, our lab teachers are, one supports CRGE and GOS. And there's a, there's a over fifty student difference between GOS and CRGE. So that person actually is split now three days versus two days at the other school. Now, the the other lab teacher that supports CAPE and Hathaway, there's similar numbers of students, so we're still at a bit like a fifty-fifty kind of spread.
So the two certificated staff split time to be able to travel back and forth, and they are supporting the pairs, I think Tracy will be talking about the pair educators. So they support the pairs that then are working with students, but the certificated staff. The pairs that, that are working with students, the certificated staff are also working with students. Because it's a caseload of students who are receiving LAP support.
And we have really specific guidelines around LAP, you know, uh, the most intense students, uh. They want, obviously that stu-, those students to be seen by the certificated teacher. Um, every year when we start, because some, there's generally some shifting in paraprofessionals in those positions. We make sure that they're updated with SUNDAY, which is the program that I kind of spoke about a while ago, um, our intense reading. Uh, structured, uh, intervention program. So. We provide that training, um, every year, so that people that are in. Um, LAP have the ability to be trained specifically in that, in that model.
So the LAP funds are a grant, so we still, we have to buy, it's not. Something that's just given every year?
Um, the LAP, the LAP, uh, funds, we, we don't apply for, we get. We get assigned a certain percentage and, and actually I will, will say this year, which is different than in years past. We actually, one of our schools actually qualified for a high poverty LAP funds. And they got an additional chunk of money, however, we got. Chalise got notified just not too long ago, last week, I think. Um, that we don't think that school will qualify for that next year, so, uh, that's preliminary, but it. It's, it's inconsistent, so we're not sure.
And that's why I brought that as an example. Because those are funds we're using now that we may not have next year, there's only going to have those. So it's a, these are funds that it, it's a, it's a, it's a grant, it's a fund that we, we still have to build a plan for. That we have to go to answer to, and when we identify, like, what's our criteria for identifying students? And there's, it's, it's fairly fluid, I wouldn't say, when students, uh, receive LAP support and maybe they, they don't accept it the whole year. And it doesn't, it doesn't happen immediately. When we're looking at elementary, first we need to assess our students and then they determine, I don't know, about the. Third or fourth week.
Yeah.
Into the.
The screening happens first part of September, like, second day of school we start.
Okay.
But LAP doesn't start until maybe twenty eighth, twenty ninth of September.
Is that specialist time? Is that when they do?
No.
No.
No, it's such a great question, so is it win time, what I need time, not during specialist time? It could be during win time, which is intervention time, it also could just be, it could be a poll out. That's worked with, say, for a second, uh, for example, the second grade teacher. So there's two or three students that qualify for LAP support, they're pulled out. And they will be in small group with the, either the parent educator or the teacher. I can tell you firsthand experience having a reading buddy. I saw a significant change in the students I was supporting with Read Northwest. Once LAP started, within maybe two sessions. My student was more confident and I, I could see the difference. So it is definitely, we are, we are encouraged by this effort, uh, there's, I think, and the plan. This is really the second year that we've, I think it's, I mean, it's the third year that we've, we've kind of followed this. Uh, like the reading focus, but we're also looking at, then, so how else can we incorporate math? Uh, you know, in the, in the future as well.
Yeah.
And sometimes, like, for example, right now, um, all the elementary schools are looking at their LAP schedules. Because we allow kindergarteners, kindergarteners are not the first. Kind of slice of the pie that we, we, you know, focus on, we get those first graders that are coming in and. Show the need for support. Now, kindergarteners have been in, they've gotten one round of Fastbridge. Screening done, and now we're looking at, um, how do we, how do we. See some of those lowest kindergarteners in reading. Add to the schedule and kind of change, so there's some transition happening now. The other thing that happens in kindergarten right now is we might not, not be able to completely facilitate having small groups. For kindergarten, so then the LAP teacher or the LAP pair goes in the classroom and pushes into. To, we call that pushing in, um, to that group of students. So, okay, you know, this teacher's going to be teaching reading at this time, so I can go and support in that way. So generally for the other groups, first through fourth. It's going to be a full out. Um, it also pays for, uh, partial, a couple of partial certificated staff. Uh, for credit recovery at the high school. We have two individuals that, that this helps support. Um, it also pays for elementary summer school and when we look back at elementary summer school for the last. I want to say like, at least five years, we have only invited students who qualify for LAP for summer school. Um, and so those are the students that we, we. And those students are students who completed kindergarten through going into fourth grade. That's the, the group of students that we support for summer school. And that will be no different this year. So those plans are already, are already made, we've already developed our plan for summer school, so. That will happen.
What do we do with for fifth grade now? I heard the credit, like, you got the credit.
Right, so as long as we satisfy, um, the requirement for the lowest students. And percentage, and it always changes because it depends on the number of students and how they get screened. There are times, especially now, that we'll have some fifth grade students where. Their comprehension is really, they're really struggling. We, we try with comprehension, but we really want to make sure if we have fifth grade students who are not decoding text. That we really, and they could be, and they can be seen, so in every school, fifth grade is. An opportunity, we can take those students as long as the other students are being, are being supported. Any other questions? Jim, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tracy.
Yes, thanks. All right, next up we have our student representative reports.
Amari Graham, who was our senior, Olivia Alvarez, who was our ninth grader. And so I asked them to consider a few questions. And then they're also here for advisory vote later, just after this. Yes, so excited about that. Mari and Libby, how are you doing? All right? And so, I don't know if we do a test of, like, tests? Right now?
Check, check.
Check, check, so you have to really, maybe project, are you ready? So glad you're here, thank you, so question, the first one was, and this is one of our strategic. Plan, so we have a strategic, uh, planning activities that we're working on, we've met with, I think. Eight, eight different groups, we've asked them these questions, the first one is, what do we want students to know and be able to? So I asked ours two student representatives this earlier, uh, this morning, it was, it was an early morning email. And so, um, if you didn't get it or look at it, so thinking about like, what do you want students, what do you think? Students should know and be able to do, and then the second question is, uh, what do you? Think we should keep doing, start doing, and stop doing? So these are the questions we're asking our staff and our, our booster groups that we've met with so far. We'll continue, we have twenty plus meetings that we're going to be participating in and facilitating these questions. All right, Amari?
Uh, for the first question. I couldn't really think of anything like, that wasn't, um. That for, like, to transition from eighth grade to ninth grade. That I wasn't, like, I felt prepared by, like, what. We learned in eighth grade and then also like socially too, I didn't feel like. I came to the high school and I wasn't like, prepared for it. I wasn't in this school district from the other ones, like the middle school. Yeah.
Can you think of, uh, a skill? That would be helpful as you are, as you're graduating and then you move on to the next stage?
For, oh, it's very.
Maybe for you, like, for you specifically, or, or yeah, in, for, for any student?
For the, um. Transition, like. After high school?
Yes.
I didn't. The personal finance stuff, I. I haven't done that class, but, um, I have some friends who are taking it, I think. Well, one of my friends actually said, like, the stuff that she learned in that class. Was, like, then she was using it, um, to, um. Actually do her taxes. So.
Wow, that's good to hear.
It's a personal finance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I thought. One of the skills that I learned, like, in middle school that helped me was typing. I don't, I didn't learn it, um, in this, which is, so I don't know if you guys have that on here, but it was.
Okay, any others you can think of? Olivia?
I didn't really like, understand the question a lot, but. The transition from eighth grade to ninth, I think that there should be more. Like, I think. Not. There should be, like. Students should be able to have more, like, mentoring oppor-, like, opportunities, like. I just recently found out that, like, I was struggling, struggling in a class that. There was like, there was like mentoring and I had to find, I found that out right before second semester. I think that when you're. Before you're going into ninth, maybe like second semester. Eighth grade. Should, I, like, I think there should be, like. Sorry. There should be more of like. That people should, the eighth year should be made aware that there's like tutoring and mentoring available for classes that. Like creating English, like a lot of kids struggle in that class and same with other classes, they should. Know that they have resources that can help.
Wonderful.
Yeah, that's great.
So what's, students should know. Is what are the resources available to them?
Yeah.
And we have heard lots of different examples in the last eight sessions, and that isn't one of them that I've heard. So I get, that's original idea, I, I like the idea, like, what, what can we provide students with the information? So it could be something that we start doing, it could also be what students should know. Is what are the resources available to them? For support. Any other wonders about, or thoughts about what students should know or be able to do? So typing, uh, personal finance, actually I've heard that a couple of different times at different groups, where it's personal finance. Any other kind of skills you think would be helpful?
Um, I think my little sister, she's like in, um, GOS, and I think she's like. Um, I'm not sure if you guys know about this, like, she's doing some sort of like, um, emotional, like, regulations. Thing at the school and I thought it was like. I never got an opportunity to do that, but I hear that's like an important skill.
Some skill for self-regulation?
Yeah. I think she's in fourth grade.
We won't talk.
Right. Okay, so anything that you think of that the school district should start doing or keep doing that you have found is beneficial?
Um, as a running start student, um, the Google, um, classroom and like the reminders from the counselors and, um. On the Scoba. Uh, those are really helpful, like, just for, um. To, like, stay in touch with the school and just to know what's going on.
Great. Olivia?
Um, this one I don't really know. Like, I. I, I couldn't think of it.
Okay. What about stop doing? What can the school district stop doing?
It's okay to be honest. It's what we want.
And if you can't come up with anything, or maybe later on you think, oh, I wish I would have said this, we have a survey that has been launched. That you can complete. And it doesn't have your name attached to it. But it will identify, we can identify that you're a student. And we, we hope that you will complete it and actually all our students will.
Yeah.
Complete it. As we, yeah, we, we definitely would like to get as much input as possible. So what we're working on with this is what's called our strategic plan, which is our commitment for students and to our community. Uh, for the next six years, this is what we're going to be working. So if you don't have one that's a stop, that is pretty consistent, it's, that's of all the things we've asked. That is probably the biggest struggle is what do we stop doing? So, okay, we're going to move on to the next question, what's something that's coming up that you're looking forward to?
Um, I'm really excited for graduation.
I bet you are. You're in your last semester. Yes, and you're in your, so you, and Mari was just saying that he's a running start student, second quarter is ending. So then third quarter will be starting soon.
Yeah.
Is there a break in between second quarter and third quarter?
Yeah, the break is like spring break, so.
So your break is, okay, and it's the same, or is it a different spring break?
Um, I think it lines up, um. Yeah, I think the third quarter will start like early, um, April.
So you're looking to graduation?
Yes.
Yeah. Olivia?
I'm looking forward towards sports.
Spring sports? Great, and what is your sport of choice?
Track.
Great, track and field, I think it starts next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. What is something that has happened that you want to share with us?
Um, recently, we went to Olympia. And it was, um. It was really cool, we, um, were sort of presenting to the. Our representatives and stuff about, um, vaping and it's not something that. Like, I, I didn't know that there was so much, like, students in the school who were, like, um. Doing stuff like for prevention. And, yeah, it was, um, it was really cool.
And then two of you, right?
Yeah.
I would probably say the same thing, the Capitol building, it was a really cool experience, um. I got into it, like, there were lots of different opinions about, like, different things and different bills that are passing. Um, and it was kind of, it, it was cool to see, like. Different, like, how many students, like. Care about, like. Prevention.
When you were at Jep to Guard last year, do you remember the survey that was completed? And the posters that were put up?
Yeah, I did a video.
Right. And, and maybe you had a similar aha moment, like, I didn't know that so many students didn't do those things. The whole point of the positive community norms is identifying that the majority of students, um, make healthy, healthy choices. So I'm glad you had a good time in Olympia. It was a big deal that you spent President's Day, they are. Advocating for, uh, making healthier choices and really talking to our legislator about, legislators about what they can do. To help with this, because they, yeah, they can, uh, there, there might be some specific bills that are included regarding, uh, you know, maybe eliminating, is it flavored? Babes? Right. And you spoke with Senator Harris. I think Representative Stevie, maybe Representative Waters. Okay, anything else you want to share?
Question with the district should stop.
Yeah, you thought of something.
Yeah. It's not like. This sounds like, but I. The bathroom has been. The. I think. It doesn't really, I guess it. It helps teachers attract, like, who's going and how many kinds of guns and stuff. But when it comes on the like. Like, if someone had to go to the bathroom really bad and someone just went to go, like, get a class, they could be gone for. I think fifteen minutes until someone goes out looking for them. And. People at that point, people don't even make a pass, they'll turn, like, just open their Chromebook or leave. And I just don't see, like, how it's really effective, that it's, students are just ignoring the past. So. I, like. Instead of, like, doing the past, like. Like, I think. It's hard to explain, like. Instead of, like, doing the past. Instead of like doing the past. I think that students should be able to like go to the bathroom when they want. Or, like, if they needed to go to the off, even just to go to the office, make a phone call, they have to fill out a form too. So. If like a student, like their one student went out, they have to wait till the other student gets back. And or like ask the teacher to make a pass and sometimes the teacher isn't available to make a pass at the moment. So I just think. That either like, it should be. Either three students can be out of time, or even if there's students out like in the same hallway as you and it's. There's more than, I think it's three students is the. Max that can be out, then it won't even like make, like make a pass or submit it until. There's another spot available. So. I think there should. I, I don't really know how that could be fixed, I'm just like saying that that is a potential problem.
Right. Thanks for sharing that. So we can collect that and I wrote it down, maybe you have to write that down. That's something I could share with principal of the high school, something you could share with principal of the high school. Maybe already have, so I appreciate that, I hadn't heard those things a concern till, till now. And so, uh, for a semester, you know, we had a happy year of that system being in place. You know, I, I go back to the first question, what should students know and be able to do? Think advocate? Or for themselves, which you're able to do, I also think about the solutions, which you came up with some solutions. So wasn't you just said? I have a problem with this, you said I've got some ideas. And you share those ideas. So that's great.
I'd be curious to see, cause I know the middle school is doing this as well, so it'd be. It'd be interesting to see the comparison between what they, the students think at some point.
Yep, and the difference in context from a, a building administrator. Who probably loves the system. To a student is, it's, it's a bit challenging. For the reasons you just stated, so. Any questions for our students?
Thank you guys for coming.
Yes.
Spending the time.
Yeah, oh yeah, you guys get to stay for the calendar.
Yeah, you're gonna stay with the calendar. Decision.
And then I'll let you go. All right. We have our proposals for actions and comments, um, citizen comments. We don't have any tonight.
We haven't.
All right, well then we're already up to our student advisory vote for our twenty twenty-five, twenty-six district calendar.
Yes, thank you, so you have the calendar in front of you. I will tell you that it is very similar to this year's calendar. And we had two calendars that we asked. Uh, staff to vote on, community members to vote on, or families to vote on, and this was the one that was received the most votes. And very similar to. Our current calendar, and it seems like there's. In currently, the last couple of years, a desire to start after Labor Day. So this, when we start before Labor Day versus after Labor Day, that's a. We, we clearly saw, and I think that was a, a concern, and then the other one had this. This week-long break in February, which was brand new. So that we have, with that in, in my time here, so, what you have is the calendar in front of you. And what the board is being asked to do is to. There to be a motion and then to vote on this calendar, it would be our calendar for next school year. And it's important to get this decision made and to get it out because families are making decisions. Staff are making decisions regarding their vacations, and so they, they wanna know when the vacation times are. Any questions about the calendar?
You guys have questions? Jim, do you have questions?
No.
Okay. Did you guys get a chance to see the other one at all? Did they get a chance to see?
Well, if they, if they attended the, the committee meeting, they could have seen.
Oh, just curious to see.
Yeah, but it was, that's not something that we published for them in the survey, I think that's something we could work on next year. Is providing students, uh, so we had, I think we had Riley there, Riley attended, perhaps, where she didn't see it.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, Olivia, I think you had a question.
Oh, I don't.
You don't think so? All right.
Okay. All right, um, all in favor?
So, so, so our student advisory vote, so. Yeah, we're gonna ask our students to vote.
Okay.
And then the, the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, our student vote, do we have favor opposed?
Are you, are you in favor of this?
Or opposed?
Your favor?
All right. Now, the board?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
I move to approve.
That's like a, all in favor.
Yes, hi.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Chuck.
So we have no one opposed to that decision, and so, yeah, so students approve. Board approves, so this will be your calendar. Done deal.
Done deal. Sorry, I was looking at this, still looking at the student advisory room, wait a second, okay. Thank you guys, thanks.
Yes, so, yeah, you are free to go, if you wanna stay, you're welcome to. Thank you. You know, and I would like you to have. If the calendar is going to be. Yes, so you can, you can take it.
Be like, hey, guys, I got the first copy. Thank you, thanks, guys. All right. Next up, we have the Washougal Arts Month proclamation.
Yes, so thank you so much, so we have council member Robertson with us. Tonight, so thank you for joining us, and you were at the city council meeting last night, so is Mr. Carpenter. So, could you give us a little, uh, it's a summary of what happened last night?
Uh, the council was presented with a draft proclamation. A council member read the proclamation and it was reinforced by the. Uh, mayor Prochem, and then the council voted to approve the proclamation, and. So then there was a photo op. The proclamation, me and the. Uh, Prochem Mayor. And Done Deal from the city.
Great.
As. As the customary, the city was very supportive of. Our students and our efforts.
Great, so I wanna read the pro- proclamation, so you all know what it says, and then see, we have two copies that I'd like you to sign.
Fantastic.
Yes, okay, so here we are, proclamation, March twenty twenty-five. Whereas the arts are integral part of our lives, and whereas the creators of all art forms are, or once were children. And whereas arts education provides substantial educational benefits, and whereas the arts teach sensitivity to beauty. And develop students' creative potential. And whereas the city of Washougal and the Washougal School District wish to both recognize the creativity of, of young people. And encourage more of our youth to become participants in the art experience. Now, therefore, we declare and proclaim March twenty twenty-five to be Washougal Youth Arts Month. And urge our community and kids of all ages to give full support to arts education. And take advantage of all the youth arts month activities throughout the city and school district.
Beautiful.
Love it.
I love that.
Yes, and we are in the school district supporters of arts. All of our elementary students have experienced art twice a week. We have art electives in both middle and high school. So, thank you Chuck for being there last night, Councilmember Robertson, thank you for being here tonight. Anything to say on behalf of the council? They gave me that opportunity.
He's just putting you on the side now. Um, we. Okay, so we, okay, do I have a motion to approve the proclamation for our month? Eric, yes.
Well, I'll move to approve the proclamation.
I'll say again.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Fantastic.
Wonderful.
Okay, if you could please.
He's playing this beautiful.
Yes.
All right, next we have the approval of school bus purchase. Oh, yeah.
Yes, so Supervisor David Tao presented at the last board meeting on. The plan to purchase three buses, um, to replace the three school buses, um, that exceeded their useful life. So, um. I don't know if you have any follow-up questions, I thought he did a good job and thorough presentation regarding, uh, the why.
Yeah.
Uh, that we have the funds. Just as a reminder, we do a really good job managing the transportation, uh, and, and, uh, the, the funding for our buses. I think that, um, you know, each year we look at bringing, uh, new buses on as we, uh, have buses that, you know, have, have used up their, the, the useful life. Uh, I think there will be a time in the near future, we're looking at electric buses.
Wow.
Yeah, and I think that that, you know, there's grants that are out there that we're looking at for this, this spring. To see if there's availability, there are school districts around us that are making those, those decisions. So this is something that we're, we're, we're looking to. For the future. Uh, this for another conversation. So any follow-up questions regarding this decision? I move to approve the purchase of the school buses that's presented.
I'll say again.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Right. Motion carries, fantastic, we are on to our policy revision. We have a policy six two two zero bid or request for proposal requirements, this will be our first reading on this.
Hmm, second.
Oh, second reading, sorry.
This is, this is the second reading, so, um, presented our last meeting, so you've had two weeks to look at this. I think there were some specific questions, uh, one of them, Jane, was about self-certification, and so we did follow up. And, you know, this is. Uh, was as recommended language.
Yeah.
That is language specifically around self-certification that we probably won't be acting on. However, it's just. Unless there's a compelling reason to, um, edit. Policy and, and procedure that's be presented as a model policy, we typically do that. Anything else you wanna add to that?
Um, so I sent the policy for our auditorium. For me, and, um, she had said identifying a school as low risk. Happens during the audit period, and when they come in, they're auditing and frigging here. So they can be able to commit to you if you were low risk during that year, and so years were passed when they came in. So the suggestion was not to use it as during an audit or make all due issues if you actually don't end up being low risk. Um, but it is lots of recommended policy and they go through their team of attorneys to look at it. So the thought was keep it in there, and there could be ones that have it in there for a reason, at some point it becomes. Something that we should use, but at the same time, we're gonna make sure our admin, we know we're going with the strictest thresholds. And not the self-certification.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay.
Any questions about policy six two two zero? Move to approve policy sixty twenty.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Great, motion carries. We are on to policy three two two one, gender exclusive schools, and this is our second reading on this as well.
All right, so similar, so similar to the previous policy, we are adjusting to, uh, updates in statute. And expectations, so, uh, yeah, any questions regarding three two one one?
Do not. Jim, nope, okay. I move to approve.
I'll say again.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, motion carries. All right, um, we have our new policies four three three zero, limiting immigration enforcement in schools, also our second reading on this. Do we have questions? I think we've answered everything.
We pretty thoroughly discussed it at our last meeting.
I agree.
Okay.
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. We're on to comments. From our board of directors. I'm gonna start with Jim since he's on our. Faraway land.
Um. Want to thank our, our team and the students and families and everybody that went up to Olympia for the, uh, Legislative Action Day. Hopefully we'll get some legislative action to, to fix the state's, uh. Uh. Lack of full support, let's say, for, for our schools, our schools and all schools throughout the state, so. I appreciate, uh, the time that everyone spent and go out there. And that's about it.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Right, Jane, you're up.
We have the comments tonight.
That's okay, you do not have to. Chuck?
Today was a kind of a special day, I got to observe our high school students twice. Uh, once at our newly remodeled senior center, community center, that the, uh, city has. Completely refurbished, and we had meals on wheels luncheon today for senior citizens, and we had a couple of our students there. That were helping to serve the lunches and gaining some valuable skills. And then second was at Columbia Ridge. Um. Elementary to watch our high school kids working with our fifth graders on how to construct toolboxes. And that was the most fun I've had in a long time. Uh, good, because. The kids were in groups of four, and so we had the high school kids helping them, and then we had observers, that was us guys. That ended up helping the kids not smash their fingers with a hammer. It was, it was, it was a great learning experience because not only were they learning construction things, part of CTE, but also they were, um. Measuring and. They knew exactly how, cause they got another math pass, to figure the area, they had to, to write down the area, width times height. No, width times length for the bottom of the boxes, so, uh, it was. Fun watching the high school kids perform, and especially the five kids who each gave a different safety lesson. For their, for the fifth graders, it was a great event.
Great.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't have much, um. I just wanted to mention, so, you know, I. I read with my son before bed, and I just noticed so much progress in his reading, uh, like doing the phonics. So it's just noticeable how much he's improved, so it's just really exciting to see. Like the education system at work and just sounding out some really big words. Uh, it's just really exciting to see. And then also, um, my husband and I will have a date night at the dinner theater this weekend at the high school.
Very cool.
So, uh, I haven't done that before, so I'm excited to see what it's all about. Um, but yeah. I did for that.
Thank you.
Um, I got to go with Aaron, and I brought my boys and Aaron brought his family, um, to the. Down the hill on President's Day as well, and. Um, what an experience, that was so much fun, my kids really enjoyed it, um, we got to meet with each one and. It was really cute at the end, my, my youngest said, we asked, you know, well, what was your best part and who did you like best? And my youngest said, Mom, I really liked Aaron Hansen the best, thanks for hiring him. So funny and so, so great, it was just cute that he got, Aaron shared conversations with them and stuff, so it was really cute, but. It was, it was a fun time and I'm really glad that we got to go and got to see our students there too, there was a huge group of students that went up there. And it was really cool to see them in action, you know, up there. Fighting for what they believe in, but kind of, you know, it was, it was pretty, it was really neat, so, and then I got to enjoy. Building with the fifth graders up at Cape. And then at CRGE today too, and I really enjoyed that, I would do that a hundred times over. Um, the kids really enjoyed it, I hope we have more opportunities like that for our kids, cause I feel like it's really important. Oh, did we lose Jim?
No, I, I just.
Um, but other than that, that's all I got. Do you want me to keep talking? Till you fix your screen?
I feel like you keep less very busy.
Yeah. Do you bring in cookies?
Such a rarity, I just, I'm so blessed, I apologize, either way.
Did you give him? Did you give him Girl Scout?
No, I need to.
Yeah, you probably should. Don't tell me that, I'm a sucker for those things.
We're good, we're good.
It's great, everything's great.
Yes, so thank you. It's a really nice thing, wait, so I have several things I wanna share with you. Uh, as I think Chuck, you mentioned, this is CTE month. It's February, there's a number of events that you, you talked about, I'm gonna share, so we are coming to the conclusion in February. So we are coming to the conclusion of February, CTE month. And so we had just a bunch of, uh, really amazing engaging activities that have been shared. So the first one I want to discuss is just the one you were talking about. And so several pictures from the, the events now, I think we've concluded. We have four different elementarys. All of our elementarys experienced the toolbox build. So Margaret Rice partnering with one of our community members on this project that other school districts have been doing. We just hadn't done it yet. So Tracy, thinking about the conversations when Margaret presented it to us, like, what are we doing? What is this event? And, and thinking about building toolboxes with hammers, real hammers with our fifth graders, that's scary. Now that it is happening.
A little scary.
What an incredible experience. And everyone I've talked to, the energy level, the engagement with, with the experience, adult or children. The children clearly the fifth graders had a blast. So what we have is pictures up here, bottom left, that's Margaret working with a student. Um, in the middle, I think is Aaron who supports Margaret. She's one of our staff members. Uh, the second, from the right to the left, the second picture on the bottom, that's George, who's a rotarian. Our road, our rotary, the campus roller really showed up for this event. There were many rotarians that were there. You see Sadie there to the left of the hammer and tape measure. There's Sadie up at Cape Horn Sky yesterday.
Yeah.
Working with a student. Thank you, Sadie, for your involvement, your engagement in this particular project, which, you know what? There was a fair level of danger involved.
Little bit, those hammers.
I know, and I helped a gauze. I took one right on the thumb, you know, and yeah, I thought, gosh, I don't know, was that nail? I'm not going to. It wasn't that bad. Thank goodness she didn't swing very hard. Okay, it took her a long time to put those nails through.
Yeah.
Different times I said, let me, let me take a couple of whacks at it. But what an incredible experience. Uh, Mr. Mansell at the high school, who along with Margaret led this entire project. The students at the high school who put together the, the pieces. Drilled the nail holes. It was really easy for our students, I think, to put it together. So incredible, that the funds that were provided to purchase the, the wood, to purchase the tape measures. Um, intentionally included the tape measure because we asked our students to measure to find the area. So a math standard, but also using a tape measure. Several years ago, we received criticism in a board meeting by a community member saying our kids don't know how to use a tape measure. Well, our fifth graders are using tape measures. Our fourth graders are going to be using tape measures. So they do know how to use tape measure.
Yep.
Now, I will challenge adults in, in this community and across the country with accurately using a tape measure, right? These are aren't things that are natural, like you need to work at it. Our kids are working on it. So I appreciate the student leadership, high school students who went over safety. And, and, and went step by step, which is what you need to do along with the volunteers. So many volunteers, so much energy, so much engagement. Yesterday at Cape, I could not believe the skill I was seeing. I was jealous.
Country kids.
It's my toolbox, but not a book like theirs or.
They were on it too.
They were on it.
Funny.
Yes, yep. Shook Shack on Friday was in action. So they, we served, yes, this was, this has been, I think it's five years in the making to get this project up and running. Again, Margaret's leadership, it did include a lot of staff members. Transportation was involved. Our mechanics were involved. So yeah, love that our students are actually serving food out of the Shook Shack. And hopefully there'll be many, many more opportunities to, to see our students having that real world experience. Providing a meals out of the Shook Shack.
So is that open to anybody or just during?
Right now, I think, yeah, during lunchtime.
Lunch thing, I think, because it's a closed campus.
Okay. For this, I'm like, can I get a? Remember the chili that they had?
Uh, we could create a counter where you get the.
Yes, you could, yes.
Oh, I would totally.
Yeah, but, but anyone, uh, yes, the neighborhood, probably not.
My son still talks about the chili that they served when they first opened.
They will be serving meals, that's right, though, in May.
Yeah.
Oh, fine.
Yes, yeah, that's you're involved in that.
Is that cash only though? Cause I feel like I went to buy some last year and I didn't have cash and I had to go get my.
Why is that?
Very good.
Yes, look at that decision.
Such a good decision.
Yes.
Look at us making moves forward.
That's right, yes. So CTE, February, still focused on some skills USA. So we had a number of our students participate. And when you look at this and plumbing, carpentry, dentistry making, we're talking about hard skills. These are hard skills, framing, plumbing, electrical, those are hard skills, right?
Yeah.
Also incorporated in this is soft skills. Can you communicate? Can you write? Can you interact? Can you speak with, you know, in intent, intentionally speaking about specific experiences? So, uh. We are really focused on CTE. If a student wants to go through a program and then after high school, start their, their work, that, that's possible, right? So we want them in their careers. If that's something they want to do. Our teachers at the high school do such a good job. Or, uh, Donna O'Brien, Brett Mansell, our other CTE teachers, just phenomenal experiences students are having. So this is one that we really appreciate, uh, the effort of our students and those that have qualified to move on and continue to compete in skills USA. Uh, future business leaders of America. And if you were part of FPLA growing up, thank you, Jane, yes. So look at all those names of students who participated and, and really did competed very well in, in regionals. And, and many of them are heading to state. So, uh, yeah, just a great job with FPLA. Uh, you notice how they're dressed there, professionally dressed.
Very good.
Right, exhibiting those soft skills that are necessary. So switching to athletics. So Wrestling State was last weekend. And we had two of our female wrestlers won state, so they're champions. Yeah, congratulations to them. Congratulations to their family. Congratulations to our coaches. It's the team effort. So those are our two champions there. Uh, Victoria is the bottom left and, uh, uh, Aaliyah is the top right. We also had two of our male athletes place at state. So congratulations to them. The banquet is tomorrow night, so looking forward to that. Then we have spring sports starting. You heard Olivia saying she's looking forward to tracks. That starts next week. So those are our spring sports at the high school. Which by the way are funded by Olivia. So thank you, community, for supporting us in that way. We have middle school sports, so girls' basketball is happening right now. So we saw a big increase in the number of girls out for basketball.
So.
We actually had so many, there was a, you actually might have seen this a couple of weeks ago. Our middle school athletic director, Jake Healy, was asking me, can we add a team of a GMS and a team of a Indian Creek? And we said, yes, after a check with Shalise, Shalise, thoughts about that? Yes, that sounds like a good idea.
I love that.
So yes, we saw more athletes, new athletes that wanted to play than we had previously, like what year before. We really kind of budgeted for, you know, number of teams based on previous years. So we're excited about having three teams. At eight, a canyon and four teams at GMS. And when we make a decision like that, those two athletes are gonna have more engagement. They're gonna be playing actually. Cause if we don't do that, there's gonna be really large teams. So I was glad we were really good. So thank you for the support to you. Thank you for the support for the community. Alright, so I mentioned a little bit about strategic planned input session. So we have twenty plus sessions. We have pictures here. Uh, he's at the bottom left one, that's a jump to guard. I was sharing a few thoughts at that particular time. Les and I are co-facilitating the strategic meetings. The middle one is another group of jump to guard staff in other rooms. What we did was, it's a fairly large staff. We have them in small groups, asking the same questions we asked our students. Really want to ask you the same thing. I want you to be thinking about that. Maybe a future board meeting, we could, we have some discussion about what your thoughts are regarding those, those questions. So that was the one in the middle was, that's actually the staff, the new staff room. They were in there, uh, working on those questions. And you see one of the teachers are writing down their, what they were sharing. Top right, that was, that's a fresh picture from this afternoon. We are at Hathaway. So we're in the library and so that is a group of Hathaway teachers going through the process. And so appreciate their efforts, their engagement again. What I asked them, what I asked, was it jump to guard I asked as well? Uh, which it, it's probably unreasonable, but I said, can you just not think about what happened today? This is in the afternoon. Half the students have left. Can you please not consider your day? Whether it was a great day or not a great day and, and just kind of push that off to the side. Can you also not think about what's happening on a federal level, what's happening and not have that impact? Right now, the input we're asking you to give, which is what's the next six years going to look like? What's that commitment we're going to make to our community, to our, to each other, to our students, to our families? Developing that next six years. So, um, I don't know if they did that or not, but it sure seemed like the, their input, their engagement was high.
Good.
And so, you know, we try to make it not to be a painful experience. It's about forty minutes. And then we do a gallery walk at the end so they can see what each group is sharing. So, uh, looking forward to, uh, when we have the steering committee sit down and start looking at this. Les and I put on the calendar four dates, one in April, two in May and one in June. Those are two hour sessions. If you are interested in participating, uh, please let me know. It'd be great to have a couple of board members.
Yeah.
We don't want to have three board members, but two would be great or, or, or one to go through this process with us.
I would love to be part of that if possible.
Thank you. So the day on the hill, Sadie, thank you for agreeing to go on President's Day. Uh, it was such a wonderful event. I had no idea what to expect. There were a lot more people doing exactly what we were doing and I did not think that was going to be the case. There was a large group of individuals on the front steps of the Capitol Building. Uh, we pretty much stayed away from the front of the Capitol.
We could hear them.
So yes, we could hear them. Yeah, so they were, uh, very vocal, um. Advocating what they were advocating for.
Yeah.
So we did meet with Senator Harris first, Representative Stevie, Representative Waters, and then finally Representative Stonier. Uh, I brought my daughter who's going to be an educator. She's in college. I brought my wife Angela, who was a former educator. Sadie, thank you for bringing your boys and your husband. It was great to, to interact with them. And yes, your, your son and I, we made a connection. We made a connection. Yeah, we do, I know.
Like he's got your back.
That's great.
It's so cute.
Yeah, just the experience for, for me and, and that, that large picture is the group that Olivia and Amari were part of. So that was connected well.
A lot of kids.
We had three staff members or, yeah, three staff members who were, were actually there supporting them. Uh, Xander Cook was really, uh, the one in the lead. And that large group of individuals, I believe, were in the same offices we were in, which were small.
Ruth.
And they fit in there somehow. And they were, they were advocating for what Olivia and Amari had shared. We were talking about the big three. We were talking about the legislative priorities that you identified. And my big goal was just to, to connect with them, let our representatives know how much we appreciate them. And anything that they can do to assist us with, uh, the big three. And, and, and we actually, our big three, where can, can you do anything with the funding model? Please, that staffing model, uh, is, is, is challenging for us. We also identified special education and MSOCs, I believe, and, and actually Senator Harris said. He is, he's in support of the big three.
Yep.
Which includes transportation. I also, I think we brought up transitional kindergarten. It's something that we need help with. So please help us with that. Uh, the bottom left is our PE, PSE representative. So we have Sandra, uh, there and Kathy Sloot and Penny Porsche. So Sandra goes, uh, who was a previous PSE president for a long time. So they were there. So I was texting with Kathy Sloot, can, can we get a picture? So we, there was, there was an opportunity at the end where we got a picture with them. So not only were our students there, but we have PSE representatives there. And then, uh, the middle picture there, uh, is Representative Stonier. And that was our last visit. And the bottom two on the right, those are Washington graduates.
So great.
Proud former principal to interact with those individuals who were there advocating for their own, uh, reasons. Uh, one in the middle is, uh, is going to be a doctor. So he goes to University of Washington. And bottom right, uh, that former student, uh, lives in Bellingham and was advocating for, for mental health. And it was just interesting moment where this Aaron, Aaron's at you. And I looked, he graduated twenty fourteen. And so first, you know, I was like, Aaron? But, God, it was just amazing to see, uh, a former student, former students there. Uh, it's always, I said, I would forward to. So it was great. So Sadie again.
Yeah, thank you for, uh. Telling me to bring my kids, because I think I wouldn't have thought of that. And I, what a great experience for some middle, middle schoolers.
Yes. So mid-year check-in. We had it yesterday with our building leaders, thanks to Tracy, in organizing the mid-year check. And we have done that the last couple of years. I really feel like we've made some important, uh, updates in that meeting and what we're, we're asking them to do. So what we asked them to do is to share their goals, remind us the goals, celebrations, challenges and next steps. So I have right here, or you are one pager from each one of them.
Oh, my God.
So what I'm gonna ask you to do is, is, I'm gonna, we're gonna give it to you. You don't need to comment right now. But in our next meeting, can we discuss? Uh, what, what you're seeing, any thoughts you have? You know, we didn't give them a template. We added this, this was a new ask. We said, we want a one pager for them. I think we actually said the board wants this. So we said, the board is looking for a one pager on the mid-year check-in. So, so how are we doing? And so you'll see really seven different formats. I'd like you to identify the ones that are most informative to you and the most appealing to you.
Okay.
And then we might, you know, then say, that's actually, that, that's the prototype we want to use. May make some adjustments. So they did a good job. They had twelve minutes. We had a timekeeper. And actually that, that was just enough. It really was. It was about two hours. And what, uh, I, I identified my observations. I appreciated their, their being reflective. Thinking about their thinking, thinking about their plan. Uh, very intentional in what they were sharing with us. They had to do it because it was twelve minutes. And then very data focused. So in some cases, it wasn't new data. Most of the case, it was new data. That's what we wanted to see. How are we tracking based on your goals that you established in September, October? And then I think for me, the most exciting thing was interim assessment discussions. We are getting to the place where we are utilizing the interim assessments. Again, your interim assessment is based off of the, the system. Uh, the assessments, they're going to be given probably in the next, uh, month and a half.
Start in April.
Start in April through the first part of June, maybe the end of May. So it's, it's good practice because it really looks like what they're going to be assessed on and that matters. Those, the practice they're receiving, it's also aligned to the standards that they're wearing. So that's really important. Uh, our next BLC meeting, we're going to be focusing on kind of the, the details around the, the assessment window and when that opens and things that we're prioritizing. So if you could just take one and pass it down, that would be great.
Thank you for doing this.
This is an example of Hannah's at CRG. This was her one pager. Tracy, anything else you want to add?
No, I, you know, I heard from, um, a couple of you at a, at a previous meeting. When they finished their school improvement plan discussion here, that, uh, you know, were you going to be part of the conversation within years? Um, just so that you're in your loop of not waiting a whole entire year to hear, um, how it's all like. How it's been going.
Yeah, this is great.
Check in, you know, and like Aaron said, we did give them a lot of guidance. I told them that you were requesting it. Um. I was available to help them if any of you reached out. Um, we talked about it in a couple of principal meetings. But really, we want to hear from you, to get you the information.
Right.
That you were interested, um. To know about.
Yeah.
India vertical teaming, this is an example where, where we are, we are vertical teaming. I think it was helpful and it was certainly helpful for me. I think it was helpful for our principals to see, you know, our high school principal, see what's happening.
Yeah.
Our elementary school principal to see what's happening. So David and Jake and Tiffany, you know, they're, they're, they're supporting as fifth, fifth graders come to sixth grade. Also eighth graders going to the ninth grade. That is really important, especially for them that they see, uh, what's occurring. So, uh, really thank you for your, your guidance and, and I really would like you to share with us. What you see, uh, you see here that's, that's valuable.
Okay. We'll have that at our next meeting.
Yep, yep.
It's great.
I think that is probably it. Other than I did flip on your, I think you have in front of you. Can you just check?
Yeah, you got it.
So this. Ten thousand five hundred or eleven thousand copies. So we used to do this three times a year, four times a year. Then I mean, I mean, it was three times and now it's twice. So because of cost.
Yeah.
Good. The different times it was, uh, there was more pages, but I, you know, at least checking out, this is going to all. Residents, correct? So they should be receiving this uh, at home. Yeah, pretty excited about it. It's a similar format. Then uh, that we, that we've used previously. Um, so I think Les did a really good job putting this together. He is, uh, he is outstanding in what he does. So uh, yeah, so.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Les.
Yep. Tracy, thank you for putting together the presentation. I think that is it.
Okay, um, do we have any future agenda items that we want to add? We haven't discussed already. Jim, do you have anything for next meeting that you'd like to have?
Nothing in particular.
Okay, alright.
For you, so one thing that, that I think I and I talked about was an update at our next board meeting regarding our capital projects.
Oh, yeah.
So I think it's something we could give you an update on, you know, how we're progressing with those projects.
Love that idea.
Anything else about as far as presentations? I think that was the, that was the main one. Yeah.
That sounds wonderful. Um, our evaluation forms are online as always. Um, they in motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at eight oh two.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
Bye.